Good evening and welcome to the April 27, 2015, meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone... Would everyone please remain standing in a moment of silence for former city councillor, Richard Penn, who passed away just two days ago. Richard Penn was a city councillor, he represented Ward 2. He was council president, I believe, in 1992. He served for ten years in this chamber as a city councillor. And I might add that, knowing Richard as I did, he served effectively for his ward. He was always doing the right thing. There was no in-between with Richard. He would compromise on certain issues that were beneficial to his ward, but he stayed the course for the people of Ward 2. So I'm gonna ask now for a moment of silence. I have a resolution of condolence. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read that, please. And then I know councillor Novosowski, who represents Ward 2 now, would also like to say a few words. And any other city councillor would like to.
Whereas former city councillor Richard M. Penn has rendered conspicuous, faithful, and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Revere in his duties as city councillor. And whereas Almighty God, in His infinite wisdom, has called city councillor Richard M. Penn to His eternal reward. And whereas the sad calling from our midst of former city councillor Richard M. Penn leaves a vacancy in the official family of the city of Revere that will be difficult to fill and a memory that will long be cherished. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Revere City Council extend to the family of former city councillor Richard M. Penn, on behalf of the citizens of Revere, our heartfelt sympathy and sincere regrets on their profound loss. And be it further resolved that in recognition of former city councillor Penn's service to the citizens of Revere, that the city council pays sincere tribute to his memory by spreading upon the official records of the Revere City Council a copy of this resolution of condolence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would also like to send my personal condolences to his wife Kathy and daughter Marcy and his son, on behalf of this council. And councillor...
Thank you, Mr. President. I literally grew up in Dickie Penn. Everybody knows him as Dickie Penn. And he was a very effective councillor. And as John said, he was married to Catherine Penn. And Kathy was also a city councillor. They followed each other here in the city council, on this podium. And unfortunately, they just lost their son several months ago. So this is a double whammy for the family, and our condolences go out to all of the family, the Penn family and the Bella Fanti family. And we'll remember Dickie always. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Any councillor, Maravito?
Just wanna give my heartfelt thoughts to Kathy Penn. She's had a tough year, and a year she lost not only her husband, but she lost her son as well. So my heart and prayers go out to her. As growing up in Ward 2, all I had, all my vision is the Penns. Before I ran Novosowski, there was just a Penn family, husband and wife. They both were city councillors, ward councillors, and they were always committed in this, to the ward. They were always active, they were always approachable, and they were always kind, and I will never forget that. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors? Madam Clerk, would you now call the roll?
Roll call of the members, councillor Rego.
Here.
Here, councillor Giannino.
Here.
Here, councillor Guanasso is absent, councillor Haas is absent, councillor Maravito.
Here.
Here, councillor Novosowski.
Here.
Here, councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, councillor Reardon is absent, councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and council president Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting Held on April 13, 2015.
Motion approved.
Calendar item number three, Certificate of Recognition, will be awarded to the Revere Texans for winning the UA Championships.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very, very much. It is great to be here tonight to recognize these very talented and obviously very athletic seven and eight-year-olds, the UA team that won the North Shore Flag Football League Championship. Congratulations to all you kids. Before I say just a few words, I'd like to call the coaches up. Kevin Cummings, Joe Internicola, Scott Sack, Bobby Connolly, and Vinnie Preziosi. Could you guys come up here, please? And any other coaches that were involved. So, as the coaches, as the coaches make their way up here, they really had a remarkable season. This was a team that really, in the regular season, won one game all year. They started off very, very poorly, but did nothing but improve themselves along the way. And, you know, that's not easy to do, to start off on the bottom and come all the way back to ultimately win the Super Bowl. That is an incredible accomplishment. And my hat's off, not only to the kids, but to the coaches and the parents. You guys must be so proud of them, and you guys must be so proud of yourselves. So give yourself a nice round of applause. You know, I'll just say, I'll just say another couple of words, and then we'll get into the citations. But, you know, earlier tonight, we had about 35 students from the Rumney Marsh Academy up here that were recognized for their work in anti-bullying in our schools. And, you know, it never ceases to amaze me whether it has to do with athletics, or scholastics, or volunteerism, the things that these kids in Revere are able to accomplish. It's one of my greatest sources of pride as mayor, is to visit our schools and recognize them for their athletic achievement, for their volunteering, as I said. We really, we really are blessed to have such great kids living in our community, and great mentors like yourselves and these coaches here that are standing behind me. So I wanna congratulate you. I'm sure there'll be more trophies like this coming our way, right? Okay? And, um, so, so with that, I'll start to read the citations. I'll read one citation, and then I'll just read the names after that. And as I call your name, please come up, and I'll hand you your citation, and you can just kinda continue walking over this way, okay? So it reads as follows: "This is a certificate of commendation, an acknowledgement of your outstanding athletic accomplishments as a member of the Revere U.S... UA, I'm sorry, the Revere UA Texans, and the team's achievement in winning the UA Championship. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Kyle Cummings." "This certificate of commendation is presented by the mayor of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of all its citizens, this 27th day of April in the year of our Lord 2015, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 238th." And it's signed by our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, and myself, Mayor Dan Rizzo. Congratulations, Kyle. Good job. Okay, that's yours. Michael Morgan. William Foley. William Foley's not here?
Yeah, we got a couple kids at baseball games.
Okay. Some kids have baseball, winning more championships, right? Okay. Austin Argen. Now, some of you, some of you may have seen his picture on the front page of the Revere Journal, so. Right this way. Nicholas Chamberlain. There you go. Joey Internicola. Nice job, good job. Robert Connolly. Congratulations. Good job. Salvatore Preziosi. Good job. Congratulations. And Brendan Sack. There we go. Congratulations. So I'm gonna ask one or more of the coaches, may wanna say a few words to acknowledge their accomplishment this year, but I just wanna say how proud I am of all you guys. You showed great resilience in coming back. I know things probably seem tough at times, but you guys were able to battle back, and sometimes in life, that's what, that's what you have to do. And you guys demonstrated that at the ages of seven and eight. So you should all be so proud of yourselves. Congratulations. Any of you guys wanna say something?
On behalf of the champion UA Revere Texans, we'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for having us here this evening. Very class act, we appreciate that. I'd like to thank the parents and all the coaches. It was a little bit ugly at first. Isn't like real. But the kids pulled it together, they worked real hard. They had a great coaching staff that bent over backwards to help themselves out of the way. All the parents, everybody to keep this thing rolling. I couldn't be more proud of these kids and these coaches and all the parents. So thank you for having us.
Okay, we're gonna take a photo up here. You wanna slide this way? Okay, right over to here, right there. Okay, right here, right there. Turn around. Okay? Maybe just slide a little bit more this way. Slide a little bit more. We got, uh, coaches, come on up here. We got all the coaches. You three, get up here too. Get up here now. Get up here now. Get up here. Get up here. Come on, these three guys with coaches too. Come on, get up here. Get up here.
Hey, where are TV?
Smile. Okay, thank you to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Bobby, say thank you to the mayor.
Go up the other side.
Come on, that way. Wanna say a few words, Joey?
Bye. Hello.
Say thank you.
Thank you, folks, thank you so much.
Better boy, better boy.
My dad told me.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the proposed loan order in the amount of $250,000 for CY-2015 CWSRF Planning Project Number 3955.
Donald Goodwin, Six Lloyd Road, North Riddick, Massachusetts, Superintendent of Public Works. I'm up here this evening on behalf of Brown and Carwell for what they call a FOG program. It's a fat oils and grease program. And it's basically a program for the perpetual care of our sewer system throughout the city. Major impacts from grease and roots and just regular, ordinary maintenance that hasn't been a priority of the city for quite some time, and it's one of the major factors that were in this SRF program that we've been experiencing over the last 10 years. And when we're done with this program of rehabilitation and putting all these new pipes and pump stations in, the perpetual care of the system is what keeps the system running. We could build a entirely new, complete system if we don't take care of these fats, oils, and grease programs and other maintenance issues, we're gonna be right back to square one within five or 10 years. So this is basically a preventative maintenance program for the perpetual care of the system. We haven't had one. I've been looking to get this in for quite some time, just for the edification of the council. You're all aware of the SSL problem that we have, wet weather, dry weather. Well, the dry weather recurrences are a bigger problem than the wet weather recurrences because the dry weather recurrence can be prevented, which is some maintenance. This fats, oils, and grease program will identify those areas where we're having the biggest problem. And if we can eliminate those large problems with the dry weather SSOs, I think that sends a signal to the regulators that the city's headed in the right direction and will be on the road to compliance much sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any other proponents?
Good evening. Charles Lombardi, 51 Thornton Road, Waltham, Massachusetts. I am the infrastructure manager for Brown and Carwell. We're under contract with the city to do a couple of things. One of them was a CMON program, which is capacity maintenance, operation, and maintenance. And it's basically a program that says, keep the water in the pipe and let it get to the treatment plant, and do what you can to make sure that it doesn't come out. It's basically an operation and maintenance program to do that. A component of that is a fats, oils, and grease program. Fats, oils, and grease, probably the number one maintenance issue in all municipal wastewater collection systems. And what, as Donnie said, what it's gonna do is it's gonna identify the locations in the city where the lines are getting coated with grease. And this kind of grease is generated from food processing, mainly from food processing at establishments like restaurants, cafeterias, maybe meat packers, those kind of things. But it also can be some residential as well. The commercial stuff is regulated, the residential stuff is tougher to get, get an arm around. But this program is gonna do that. It's gonna identify the locations in the city where these kind of discharges has created a problem, causing blockages and diminished capacity in the sewer. Because the way it works is fats, oils, and grease is, if, I'm sure you may have all cooked bacon, although everybody's healthy now and probably doesn't eat bacon, but, you know, in the old days when you cooked it, you used to pour the fat into a can and throw it away. Well, that doesn't happen in all food processing establishments. And that kind of grease goes out in a liquid form, and then as it moves down the line, it coagulates, it coats the sewers, you know, pipe from the inside out, and it creates what I call a reverse candle effect, where the pipe, as it gets coated, gets smaller and smaller. And when you diminish the capacity, and you need a lot of capacity, like municipal wastewater collection system drew during wet weather, that's when you get the SSOs. And if you keep on going without properly maintaining those areas, then you get the blockages, and you get service interruptions, and you get sewer backups. So among the things it's gonna do, it's gonna identify locations that need to be maintained at more frequent rates than other areas. It's gonna identify the contributors that are contributing these excessive discharges. We're gonna work with the contributors to control at the source, and we're gonna establish, you know, a program that's gonna help the wet weather situation, prevent the dry weather situation, as Donnie said, and ensure the perpetual care of the system, and bring the system, bring the city closer to compliance with the consent decree. And this is a very effective, inexpensive way to, to support the city's efforts to comply with the consent decree. So happy to have the opportunity to talk to you about it, and happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Are there any other proponents? No other proponents? Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Opponents? Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Councillor Novosowski.
Mr. President, just wanna clarify something. This is for a FOG program. Now, this is only for a study. Am I correct? Is that what this money is for?
It's for a study and an implementation plan. You know, we will be setting up, you know, schedules for the city to maintain these areas. We will develop a public outreach portion to explain to the contributors, you know, what their role is and what the, the cause of not having a proper grease trap in their establishment, and if they do not properly maintaining it. It will be a sampling program to monitor the effectiveness of what these contributors may be contributing to ensure that they are in compliance with the city ordinance and the MWRA ordinance regarding sewer discharges.
Do you already have a contract for this?
We do not have a contract for this.
You don't? So that's coming next? Because I, the way I heard it, we're under contract, so.
Well, we do some as-needed engineering, small amounts of stuff. Yes, for other things.
Yeah, right. Because I know you did the pump station down the pines. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Novosowski. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, you're gonna coordinate with inspection services that, if there's any restaurants without a grease trap at this time, in 2015, I'd be very surprised. So, I mean, there may be some that are hooked up improperly or snuck in or whatever, but is there some coordination with inspection services in this program?
Yes, sir. There will be extensive coordination with that branch of the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Zambudo. Any other councillors? Councillor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna originally ask the question that councillor Zambudo would ask about inspection services, because I assume that any, any restaurants or commercial properties that are, that are part of this problem would be kinda in non-compliance. Is that correct?
That would be, it would be non-compliance with the city sewer use ordinance, and could be in non-compliance with the MWRA sewer use rules and regulations. But I believe the city's regulations are a little bit more stringent than the MWRA, and that's acceptable.
Yeah. And would we be coordinating also with MWRA then?
We would be coordinating, letting them know, reporting to them through the municipal permit process, which all member communities go through.
Okay, great. And, and just to clarify again, I, because I think councillor Novosowski touched on this, but the 250 is for the, for the planning process of the work, not the actual work, right?
The, well, we're gonna be part of the, you know, the inspections of the contributors with inspection services for the city. We're gonna set up the, the sampling, we're gonna set up the maintenance schedules. The actual maintenance that has to be done will be done through Donnie Goodwin's staff at Republic Works.
Okay, so, so, Donnie, your staff will be actually doing the work? They're kinda doing all the lead-up to the, to the work that you guys will actually be doing?
Yes, I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding. The, the commercial aspect of it is a small portion of this program. The basic maintenance of the overall system, we need to identify the problems, the areas that have given us the most consistent problem on a regular basis, and that needs to be cleaned. This council has seen fit that we have one of the most sophisticated camera operations of any city in the greater Boston area right now, so it's time for us to put programs and plans in place for the perpetual care of the system, so we don't come down to these huge issues that may arise down the road because we didn't identify the proper issues. So this is not just about commercial, this is about residential, this is about how the system works. There'll be training exercises for the, for the guys that work for me. We do have the equipment that is necessary to, to do this type of work, and we also have money in our operating budget every year through National Water Main to help in areas where, where, where we don't, we don't have sufficient help to do that. So we, this is a big part of coming, of compliance. If you people who read those CWSMP reports, is that dry weather SSOs are preventable, and they're a bigger problem than the wet weather ones. And part of the wet weather issue leading up to the consent order was the fact that we've never had a program where a certain percentage of the city would be cleaned every year. I mean, there are certain pipes that we do now every year, certain pipes that we're gonna have to two-year, you know, we're, we're making ground on this issue. But this fats, oils, and grease program is a, is a very integral part of us getting a proper program in place. So three to five years from now, we can totally eliminate our dry weather SSOs.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Rego. I just have one question to clarify in my mind. So this $250,000 will be used to identify an area like ABC BBQ or something like that that may be putting excess grease into the system, causing the potential for that system closing down, down the road. Is that, am I correct?
That's correct. Councillor Powers.
Any other councillors? Councillor Maravito? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say that I'm glad that we're, we're finally getting to actually take care of the, the system, seeing that we have to pay the penalty for things that were done in the, in the past. And hopefully, the councils of the future won't have to worry about the, the punishment that, that they put under, under us. That's all, that's why I think it's about time that we, we start to really take care of the system, and this is the first step. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Patch. Councillor Maravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think this is long overdue. A lot of the cities have already started to comply and started to, not comply, but go that route. I know, so there's gonna be, with this loan order, there's gonna be enhanced sewer maintenance and public outreach. Will, public outreach and education, I'm assuming?
Yes, councillor. Public outreach and education. We, Brown and Carwell, with, with representatives of the city, will be back here with the public outreach program that we're going to roll out. Before we roll it out, we'll present it to the council, you know, for your review and approval. And it's very important that you...
And it's very important that you, that we in the city let the commercial contributors, as well as the residential, the residents of the city, we need to educate them as to what the impacts of these type of discharges are and what they can do to mitigate them themselves with good housekeeping practices. And with regard to the commercial users, they may be in violations, but it's not our intent in this program to do any undue hardship to them. We do need them to be in compliance, and we need to explain that, and the public outreach program will do that. And we'll work with them in the city to bring any of the people, commercial contributors, that do have excessive fats, oil, and grease discharges, we'll work with them to get them into compliance. It's not our intent to go out there and start finding people, you know, that are not in compliance. So it definitely, this is what the public outreach component is going to consist of.
Thank you, Counsel. I just have one more question. If they're found to be commercial establishments that are habitual contributors, is there any recourse from the city to recover? Because we're spending $250,000 and we're going to spend money to clean these areas. Is there any recourse that the city will have to gauge how much out of compliance they are and if there should be fines or penalties? And I'm not looking to hurt businesses, but I mean, if you've got a business that's pumping all types of grass, grease into a sewer system, and it's clogging up that sewer system, and it's costing the city money to go out and clean that system, I think there should be some recourse for the taxpayers in the city.
There will definitely be recourse if those situations are present, and we have verified that those contributors have caused problems in the city that were quite expensive in the city.
Substantial.
Having to control them and deal with them. So definitely, that will be a part of the program. We're hoping there's not many like that. And the biggest thing with commercial is they likely all do have grease control system traps, but they may not be the right size, and they may not be maintaining them at the proper rate. And both of those issues are problems. And another big problem with commercial facilities is they're required to wash their utensils, their dishes, their pans, at, you know, like 140 degrees to get proper bacteria kill. And if the trap is not properly located, and you're running hot water through, you're just emulsifying and carrying on through the system, and it coagulates further on down the system. So these are all components of this program that are going to be looked into and corrected.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other counselors? Ways and Means.
Thank you all.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered upon the application presented by National Grid for locations along Walnut Street Extension.
My name is Nuya Noe, National Grid Electric, 170 Metford Street in Malden, Mass.
Is that mic on? Because I can't hear you.
Testing. You hear me?
Okay. Keep it close in here.
Nuya Noe, National Grid Electric, 170 Metford Street in Malden, Mass. Miriam for petition to install two poles to provide electrical service to a new residential area, which is extending the primary electrical cables to two poles and running an underground 170 feet of conduit to the underground transformer pad to feed three new homes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents here on this hearing? Are there any opponents? Hearing, none, I'll close those sides of the hearing. Counselors? Any counselors? Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing this is my ward up in North Riviere, they're building for my colleagues information, they're building several houses up in the back there on Walnut Extension. I did not get any phone calls against off off, so I would be all right with it, yes.
Any other counselors? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by National Grid? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent, Counselor Haas is absent, Counselor Maravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called as ordered upon the special permit application of Flightcar, 620 Davis Street, San Francisco, California, for a quest to operate a rental car service at 85 American Legion Highway located within the TED District.
Proponents?
Mr. President, good afternoon, honorable counselors. James Siple... A karaoke. James Siple at a 385 Broadway, Revere on behalf of Flightcar, the applicant. I'm going to try to be as concise as I can because I know we're going to zonie and public safety. However, since this is a little, a concept that's a little bit different from what we've seen in the city in terms of a rental car type operation, I just want to spend a couple of minutes explaining it. This is an idea that had its genesis in Cambridge, where most, many good ideas are formulated, and then it moved out to the West Coast. So Flightcar is based in San Francisco, and what it does is it operates a car sharing service all over the country. And it's established in most of the major metropolitan areas, and we're fortunate enough to have one very interested in operating in Revere. The way that it works is that Flightcar has partnered with the Comfort Inn, so that the guests who are coming in to leave their car, let's say, stay a night at Comfort Inn and going to leave their car for a week and fly out, then can share their cars with someone who might be coming to New England to enjoy, let's say, the summer or the fall activities or during school vacation, they can share the car of the guest who has flown off to somewhere else. So really, it's a zero sum in terms of number of cars on, coming and going and on the premises. And so to that extent, it's really a little bit different from a rental car type operation like we see up on the highway. Although, it's sort of a gray area, and we've had some discussions with the administration, with inspection services, with the planning and community development people. It was thought best to apply actually for a rental car license. We do understand that there is a yearly, I'm sorry, there is a per rental car fee due to the city. So that's sort of what, that's the concept of how this all works. So it doesn't entail bringing more cars than ordinarily would be here anyway, as if they were bringing in 20 cars to rent out. The cars are already here. It's just allowing others who would be coming in to stay in Massachusetts or around the Revere area to share the cars. So to give you just an insight to the two people who would be overseeing this, Ben Hanson is the manager for Flightcar, he's a regional manager, and he's here. And of course, many of you know Scott Hops, who's in charge down there at the Comfort Inn. And this is a good symbiotic relationship, where the Comfort Inn has assimilated the business of Flightcar into its operations. So it's not, it's not something that can on its own run out of control. And with permission from you, Mr. President, may Mr. Hanson just address the council and after him, Mr. Hops, just for a very brief moment to explain in a little more detail than I was able to do.
Certainly.
Thank you, sir. Hi, my name is Benjamin Hanson. I, oh yeah, got it. I live in Chelsea, I don't live in San Francisco. I was hired from the two gentlemen that found the company to oversee the operations in the Revere location. A little bit about our company, it is a ride share, I guess it isn't your traditional rental car company. I have people that leave cars with me for maybe a couple of days, a couple of weeks, or even months at a time. I guess maybe snowbird types that go off to Florida will leave their car, you know, maybe three or four months. And in turn, we rent it to, you know, people that are coming into the city, whether it's for business or recreational purposes, at an affordable price. I can answer any questions. I guess that's kind of the gist of it.
Yeah, I have a question. What would be the enumeration to the city? Is the same as the car rental surcharge?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And how, what about liability? Let's, that's a main concern, I think, as far as I'm concerned.
As far as insurance on the vehicles are concerned?
Well, somebody leaves a car there and you rent it to somebody, and they go out and they hurt someone or worse. How do you determine if they have added with insurance?
All of the insurance is, every car is covered by liability.
You have a blanket policy?
Yes, million dollars.
Okay, all right. That was a main concern of mine. All right. Are there any other more proponents here? State your name and address, please.
Evening. My name's Scott Hops. I'm the general manager at the Comfort Inn Suites at 85 American Legion Highway. We, I think Jim summed it up pretty nicely. We are excited hosts to innovative business. It's early days, but they've been excellent thus far. People are their word, and we're excited to see this evolution of our business partnering with them and, you know, with, certainly with your support and making sure that this works out well for the city and works out well for us and works out well for the locals that have been taking advantage of this and the people coming in from the outside. It's nice to see that some of the cars that are otherwise just sitting there are going out to good use. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other proponents? Proponents? Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Any opponents? Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors? Counselors Ambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You asked a couple of my questions on insurance and liability, which is, I assumed it was covered. I don't think anybody enters into this kind of a situation without substantial coverage, because there is, when you're taking people's cars and lending them to someone else. I guess my only other question would be service. These, you know, if you've got a car for a month and you're going to ride share it or rent it, you're obviously, you're going to have to do maintenance. Are you equipped to do the maintenance, or how do you, how's that work?
Yeah, we are not equipped to do the maintenance onsite. We take it to various locations. Majestic Auto is one of them. Even World of Collision, I'm trying to think of a few others. Firestone, that's...
Well, as long as they're Revere businesses, I'm happy with that.
Absolutely. They're all Revere businesses. Yeah, no, they are. But no, we do, we maintain the cars, you know, oil changes, tire rotations, you know, your everyday, you know, maintenance would be...
Great, great.
Yes.
One other question. What other cities and towns are you in? Are you?
In Massachusetts or...
Yeah, well, in, anyway, in Massachusetts.
Nothing in Mass. We have...
Nothing in Mass, so we're the...
All of them Revere.
We're the first?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
We are the first, that's correct. San Francisco is the second. We just opened in San Jose, Los Angeles, Portland, Seattle, Baltimore's a new one, Denver. We're actually visiting London, England in a month. They asked us to talk to them, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy for a couple of reasons, because it is an innovative, new business, and anything that the Comfort Inn supports, we support because we have a wonderful relationship with the Comfort Inn and the Saunders Group. They're the kind of businesses that we want to keep in the city and grow. So we're happy for that. But I'm even happier that you're complying legally and making these transactions, just like rental cars, and they would be surchargeable, which helps pay for our police station mortgage. So there's selfish reasons involved here. But I'm grateful that this is finally coming, and we wish you all the success. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other counselors? Counselor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one quick question, again, in terms of insurance. So say someone from Revere who lives in Revere and whose car is registered in Revere leaves a car there, and someone from another state uses it and is in an accident, how does that affect Revere's insurance rate?
That's a good question. Typically, if, I'm trying to think of how I can answer this. So if there's a Revere resident that leaves a car with us and somebody gets into an accident with that particular vehicle, that person's insurance will be the one that covers the damages, unless, of course, it was, you know, somebody else that hit them.
So the driver of the vehicle, not the owner where it's registered to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's, that's it? Thank you, Counselor Gino. Any other counselors? With that said, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Calendar item number seven, Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we met earlier today, and there were three items on our agenda. The first one was a relation to the Tidegate failure at the B&amp;M Tracks in Yaward down off North Shore Road. And I think you were pleased with what you heard and what's going to happen, so we tuck that up.
I am very pleased, and it's a positive step in the right direction for the people of Oak Island and Lower Revere Street.
Right. And Superintendent Goodwin did a fine job explaining to us the pros and cons and everything that's going on with the water racks and stuff. The other item that we spoke about was Globe Direct on those advertisements that are thrown onto the sidewalks, missing the houses all over, the white bags, used to be yellow bags and orange bags, and they changed the color to try and make everybody think it's somebody else. But we gave them an ultimatum. We told them that everybody on the City Council was disappointed in the actions of their drivers, in the way they throw the bags, not on the people's property, but on our city streets and sidewalks. And we told them that we are considering, if they do that further, that we are considering to have the Board of Health find them for littering. And I will pursue that if it continues, I'm sure I'll have the support of many of the counselors here, you know, Counselor Gino and Counselor Guanasso, both had motions in relating to this situation. So the president of the corporation was here, and it is not Globe, the Globe newspaper, as we say, it's a publicity organization called Globe Direct. They are related to them, but it's not under their total jurisdiction. The last item that we talked about was Superintendent Goodwin was here, talking about our pothole situation around the city, where we stand with it, and how many, how many we have, where the money's coming, where the money's going, where it's not going, and all the issues that we're running into as far as bidding out for contracts to get private companies to fill our holes. So with that, Mr. President, that's my report, and next month, we'll have another committee meeting to hopefully to talk about our winter doljums that we made, that we went through and to continue on to try and solve them for next month.
I know those, thank you, Counselor Nowosowski. I know those papers being thrown around the street have been a particular concern to Counselor Gino, and I hope that this gentleman this evening that was here got the message that if there's not a cease and desist on this, then we'll be asking the city solicitor to seek some type of legal action. Thank you, Counselor.
Counsel President, do you want to leave those in committee or place on file?
I would leave that, leave that in committee. Let's leave that one in committee.
Both of them?
Yeah.
B&amp;M Tracks, Tidegate?
Yeah.
Or remain in committee?
Well, yeah. Let's see what happens.
Okay, thank you. Calendar item number eight, communication from the city clerk relative to the approval of the charity bond of John Henry Parking Clerk for the city of Revere.
Now, require a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
On the charity bond for John Henry Parking Clerk, Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent, Counselor Haas is absent, Counselor Maravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the charity bond has been approved. Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to a proclamation for National Nurses Week.
Roll call, please, on that.
Roll call on the proclamation for National Nurses Week. Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent, Counselor Haas is absent, Counselor Maravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch? Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the proclamation has been adopted. Calendar item number 10, communication from Verizon relative to relocating a jointly-owned pole on Hitchborne Street.
Public hearing.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Michael Slomich as a constable.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Pelletier and Milbury Corporation as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment, Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that a certificate of recognition be awarded to Rick and Jody Frenney of the Little Ricky Foundation for their efforts to raise awareness and support for autism.
Motion approved.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky, that the mayor include in the fiscal year 2016.
Point of order, Ms. President Frenney.
State your point.
I'm sorry to override the motion on Counselor Rigo. Did you, I don't know if the council wanted to speak on it.
I was planning to reserve my comments to the meeting that we actually give the award, but I don't know if the president knew that, but I do plan to.
Go ahead, go right ahead.
I do plan to use my time at that point to congratulate them and recognize them for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo.
I'm sorry, Ms. President.
Counselor Novoseltsky.
I stand corrected and we'll let that go, thank you. Mr. President, can I just make one other thing and go back on one item?
Yeah, sure, certainly, certainly.
I'm back on Pelletier and Milbury Corporation. Can we notify the superintendent that the insurance has lapsed?
Oh, it has, okay.
So, we want to make sure they get us a up-to-date insurance liability policy. Thank you.
Point of inquiry.
State your point.
Can I ask through the clerk or through you, to the clerk, do we ever issue a license without an intact certificate of insurance?
No, we have not. But it's my understanding that you can't receive a bond without an updated certificate of liability.
Right, so we would not give a license unless that certificate was in hand, because if it's not, we've got to change the procedure. That's all, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
Counselor Novoseltsky.
You know, through you, to Counselor Zambudo, I'm just going by what the paperwork comes in front of us, comes in front, and the insurance policy that they're showing here is expired. So, I'm just asking that we get a, I'm not saying that they haven't, I'm just saying I want to make sure that we have an up-to-date insurance policy.
I just, I hate to go back and forth, I wasn't trying to criticize you. What I'm trying to say is we've got a safeguard in place. It's good that you point these things out and I'm glad that you catch every one of them, because you do catch every one of them, but the clerk is the final backstop for this. Thank you.
Well, I understand Counselor Novoseltsky does catch them, but I think if Counselor Guanasso had this in front of him, he would also catch us. He's chairman of appointments. Okay, all right. Let's get the boat going.
Mr. President, we're on 1591 now. Calendar item number 40, yes. Calendar item number 40. Mr. President, that's my motion. And what's happening here is we have a set of public stairs that leads from Noshua Road up to Campbell Ave and over the past three or four years, we've had rodent problems there and one of the issues is it's city property and.
They burrow in.
That's not that they burrow, it's that the stairs have cracked and have developed their own openings. So, I want to make sure that we get Public Works, our city planner, to get down there and have all the holes filled so we'll stop the access and egress from the little rodents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novoseltsky. His motion, all in favor?
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky, that the mayor request the city planner to include Hitchborne Street from the Revere Beach Parkway to Lee Burbank Highway on the street and sidewalk capital improvement list for FY 16 or 17.
Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although it speaks for itself, you know, this end of Hitchborne Street between the Revere Beach Parkway and Lee Burbank Highway is always forgotten and I don't want anybody in my ward to be forgotten and left in the wind. So, I want to make sure that they made aware and can I also add on to that Winthrop Place, which is a small dead-end street about 100 feet long, so.
Counselor Novoseltsky's motion, all in favor?
Has amended.
Has amended.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the mayor request the Director of Finance, in coordination with the assistance of the appropriate city departments, provide the city council with a projected budget detailing the estimated cost of the St. Mary's Ball Field renovations.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I put this motion in following up on conversations we've had about the Harry Del鲁so Stadium and St. Mary's. And if folks remember, we bonded $2.1 million in March 2013 and we found out recently that that project is already $1 million over budget and we don't have a shovel in the ground yet. So, in order to get our head around how much this is actually going to cost, I'm sure it's going to be more than a million over budget, I think it'd be helpful to see a breakdown similar to what we got from the city planner last week on the Harry Del鲁so Stadium, a breakdown of the budget on what is driving the million-dollar figure over budget and how much we think we're going to end up, if we're going to end up at 3.1 or 4, or, you know, where we're going to, where we realistically look at what we're going to end up spending on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo.
I just want to say I think it's a good motion and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. Any other counselors? Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also think it's a good motion, but after attending several meetings with the community planning and the people of St. Mary's, Little League, and I think originally they planned on putting like artificial turf in there and I think now they're probably thinking of taking after the, seeing the problems with the stadium. And I just want to stress that I hope they continue with the idea of putting the artificial turf in because even though it's going to probably be either between $500,000 or $700,000 more for the three fields, I think the bond would be worth it over a period of 40 years that our kids can enjoy it, as they know that the water table down there is very high and the kids, grandkids, they should have the right to enjoy being able to play on the artificial turf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other counselors? I also think it's a good motion. I also think that we should look toward having artificial turf down there for the youngsters in the city. Most all other cities and towns have it. Why not Revere? Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, so are.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Revere as follows. Section 1, section 2.12.130, Financial Impact Statements of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, is hereby amended by inserting the following paragraphs. Prior to the final vote on any bond authorization which comes before the City Council, the Director of Finance, with the assistance of the appropriate city department, shall provide the City Council with a projected budget schedule detailing the actual or estimated cost of said bond authorization to the city. Prior to the final vote on any bond authorization which comes before the City Council, the Director of Finance shall also provide the City Council with an updated debt schedule detailing all bonded debt incurred by the city and detailing the future financial impact of said bond authorization to the city. Prior to the final vote on any bond authorization which comes before the City Council, the Director of Finance shall provide the City Council with a debt service schedule detailing the future financial impact of said bond authorization to the city.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I put this motion in and it's actually an amendment to Counselor Zambudo's initial ordinance of financial impact statements, which I think was a great move for the City Council and a great move for the city in general in terms of financial health. What this would do is essentially put into our ordinances best practices. Right now, we do not get this information. We get it if we ask for it and sometimes if we ask for it, it takes a little while to get. I think if the expectation is that this information needs to be brought forward with the bond authorization or with the request of the bond authorization, it formalizes a process that will help everyone be on the same page. It will prevent issues such as the Harry Del鲁so Stadium debacle and we can all be on the same page on how much things cost and what the expectations are for the financial health of the city. So, I do look forward to any conversation that we might have on this, but this does simply formalize good best practices. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo.
Again, I think this is a good motion, that it adds to what we've already put in place and I don't have a problem with this going to a public hearing.
Any other counselors? This will be ordered to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Revere as follows. Section 1, section 2.12.100, Voting on Expenditures of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, is hereby amended by inserting the following paragraph. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a vote of the City Council shall be required for the expenditure of any grants or gifts from the federal government and from any charitable foundation, private corporation, or any individual, or from the Commonwealth, a county or municipality, or agency.
Right. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as you could tell, even though I have a pregnant wife, I have a lot of time on my hands in terms of putting forward financial ordinance changes. This, the idea behind this is the fact that I think the City Council ought to be kept in the loop on how all money is being spent in the city. This comes down to very bluntly oversight, accountability, and transparency. We do not get to see every grant or bond, grant or state or federal money that comes in and there have been instances in the past where we voted on bonds, the Gibson Park being one of them, but there are other bonds that have been out there that get expended that we, I'm sorry, other grants that are out there that get expended that we do not have a handle on. And I think that it does come down to our ability to have oversight and to know how money is being spent and to have a better understanding of what's going on. And, you know, we only have to look outside to see how poorly state grant money can be spent. And it is unfortunate that, from the appearance of many people, that we had approved what amounts to a disgraceful monument out front and, you know, many people have come up to me and said, well, why would you approve that? And I think it needs to be made clear that we do not have approval of grants as it stands now and I'd like to change that. And I might add that the future water fountain out front, it really is a slap in the face to taxpayers, to residents who have hit plenty of potholes this year and it's a slap in the face to everybody who works in City Hall, anybody who has to deal with sewer flies, as we have tonight, and anybody who just drives around the city and sees where the priorities lay with this administration. And it is unfortunate. I think that there are a lot of good ways to spend state grant money. I don't think that wishing well is necessarily what we need, although we may need to make some, we may need to make some wishes and be able to balance our budget. With that said, I just want to make it clear that we do not have the type of oversight that we need to have on grants. We should not be held accountable for what amounts to wasteful spending. And I hope that we can move forward and be able to do what we are able to do by state law and be able to approve expenditures, all expenditures in the city. Thank you.
Counselor, I have one little problem with this and that's with regard to when we say all grants, we're including the school department now and I don't believe that this, while we vote on the budget of the school committee and the school department, which is millions and millions of dollars, we don't have any direct oversight on how the school department, the superintendent, and the school committee spend that money. So, I don't want to get in the business of trying to tell the school department certainly what they should apply for for grants, what they should spend the money, even if they do get the grants.
Mr. President, I'd be more than willing to amend the, to amend the motion to exclude school grants. We do, by state law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, it does state that we have the ability to vote on all grants that the city gets. So, if there is a question, and I know the school committee themselves actually look at each grant and they know every penny that's being spent out of that school department. So, if we want to amend it to say any grants or gifts, with the exception of school department grants or gifts, I'd be more than willing to do that. I do think that it's important for us to be able to, it's not any more work for us to know what's going on in terms of grants and we ought to be able to have some oversight on that. Thank you.
Well, you know, look, one minute, Counsel. Some of the grants that the city does get, they're in, they're small amounts of money. And I think if you're going to do this, you have to put a dollar amount on it, anything of, I don't know, $25,000, $50,000, $100,000, whatever, you know, whatever we feel that we require oversight on. I mean, if somebody's applying for a $5,000 grant for weapons in the police department, I think that the chief of police can certainly handle that adequately. If you're talking about large grants, that's a different story.
That's understandable and I think we could figure that out or figure it out in either committee or have an amendment that would be, you know, anything above $5,000.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right from the outset, I'm against this motion. First of all, I voted for creating the position of finance director in the city and this effectively takes his duties away from him, or one of his duties at least, away from him. But I really have to address some of the grandstanding that went on by my colleague to my right. I've responded to some of the emails that some people were sending out about the Broadway improvements and I like to think that I convinced the people that were making these ridiculous comments about King Rizzo, et cetera. I'm one who serves on the Broadway Advisory Committee and I saw these drawings early on and I knew what was going there. What some people don't know, especially the constituents, is that this money can't be used for fixing potholes. This money has to be spent on Broadway, for the Broadway improvements. Now, I went back and forth with one of the constituents who was very upset about the granite and its two grandstand. granite and its too grandstanding, and it looks like it's memorializing the mayor, and how come the mayor's name? Well, anytime we've ever done major capital improvements in the city, for the last 100 years, the current mayor's name goes on those improvements. You can see the things that were done at City Hall over the years, there's Mayor Calala, Mayor Haas, Mayor Ambrosino, these are the things that are done normally. But the bottom line is, what people don't know, and one of the comments was that, you know, the lights haven't gone all the way up Broadway. Why aren't we spending this money instead of the granite? Why aren't we spending it on? Well, guess what? The lights are going all the way up Broadway. And then another comment was, well, the street needs to be paved, Broadway. Well, those of us that know and that participated in the improvements know that the Broadway will be completely repaved from the Casasrover Pass to Tuckaman, to Cushman, I apologize. But the bottom line is, that money had to be spent on that particular work. And to say that, to attribute it to the flies in City Hall because we've got construction problems here that have to be torn out so we can get to the bottom of these things, some people up here are voting against the money for the architect so that we can get these problems solved at City Hall. But yet we're quick to use things like that when we're trying to make what I consider a grandstanding point. This is a federal grant.
Counselor, let's not get into the politics of this.
Well, it's a federal grant that has to be spent on Broadway, and that's what's going, and the drawings were available, and those of us who saw this coming into fruition knew what we were going to get. And when it's finished, I dare say that everybody's going to be very pleased with it. But to start throwing bobs, and the bottom line is, I cannot vote for this because it's taken the duties of something that I put in place away from the Finance Director, and I will not support it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me, here are my thoughts on this. Fine-tuning the requirements so we as counselors can have a better understanding of what's going on with the budget and what comes forward or the future of projects in the future of Riviere, I don't see anything wrong with it. Does the motion need some tweaking? Absolutely. But we are similar to a board of director for a multimillion-dollar company, and we are responsible and held accountable for the finances of this city. And for us to go a step beyond and ask for this information, I don't see why not. To be provided with more detailed information, I don't see a problem with that, but I do think there could be some tweaking in the motion with the school budget, obviously, and similar ideas that you brought forward.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. Any other counselors? Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'm not for this motion. I've worked for the city for many years, and I don't feel, and I've worked with two mayors, and I just don't feel that we have to micromanage just because a certain counselor has a personal agenda. I don't feel that it's our duty to miss, he's the mayor, he's the head of the city, and if, plus he put it, like Counselor Zambudo said, there's a board that was put in place to do these improvements, and I'm just, I don't feel like I have to, as a city counselor, have to micromanage the administration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know Counselor Orego is trying to do the best he can with, you know, everything. He's a finance guy, you know, that's his bailiwick, but in this particular case, I don't agree with him. These federal, these grants that we're getting are special fund grants for specific items. You know, it's not that we get, like Counselor Zambudo said, that we get money, you know, and we put it anywhere we want, but that's not a fact. When the grant application goes in, it's for a specific item. In the case of the fountain that may, you know, that's going to be built out front, you know, that was specifically given to the city for the revitalization of Broadway by Secretary, then Bailecki. He thought it was a great idea, and that means we're going to be questioning every grant that is filed by our planning department, the community of development. We go through 20 or 30 grants a year, if not more, and I'm just guessing at this point. And for us to have to approve the expenditure and the payment of every grant that goes through, the treasurer, who is the Finance Director, who is responsible for all these payments, it has nothing to do, we'd have to go through grants for all the street repairs, through Chapter 90 money, that's grant money, believe it or not. That means we'd have to approve every single street repair and every paving of every street and sidewalk. I can't see us doing that. That's really micromanaging, and I know that's a word that everybody's using, but I just can't help it, I have to repeat that. These monies do not affect the budget. It's not in the budget. We don't think about these things when we're doing the budget, and then as grants become available from the state and federal government, we apply for them. It's money coming into the city, but it goes in for a specific issue. And, you know, in this one, I don't agree with the counselor on this one. So, thank you.
Counselor Orego, as the maker of the motion, you'll have, Counselor Janino, did you want to speak on this? Counselor Janino speaks first.
Sorry. Thank you. I believe that, you know, the purpose of government and the reason why there is a council is the system of checks and balances, and every single branch of government has it, you know, in the courts and here. So I don't see it as something negative. I see it as something to look further into. It's something that we're discussing. It's not something that we're saying is right or wrong right now, and I'm sure that there are instances where things affect our police department or our fire department, and they get wonderful grants, and I do, you know, think that it's up to the chiefs to decide on that. And it's not a matter of questioning whether or not they're making decisions about them, but it's a matter of, as representatives of the people, being able to answer questions when people ask us some things, if they say, you know, hey, what's going on with this or what's going on with that? If we may not be aware of a grant, or we may not be aware of something that is going on, so it's definitely something that I look forward to hearing more about, but I don't take it as something negative, and I don't take it as something positive. I take it as something that's a part of our job and something that we're looking into. You know, we're not here every day to give out awards and to do these wonderful things. You know, some parts of our job are not as fun and not as glorious, and this is one of them. Sometimes we have to get down into the fine lines and read paperwork and do that, and if that's what I have to do, if it's reading over potholes or sidewalks or however small or large the grant may be, it's part of our job. And I think that it's something that I look forward to exploring more, and, you know, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Orego is the maker of the motion, so he'll get the last word on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just want to go back to a couple of things that were said that I want to correct. First, Counselor Zambudo is correct that this is federal money, or some of it was federal money. There is some state highway money that is part of that, and state highway money which could go to streets. And to the point of the micromanaging, when the priority of the administration is to put somebody's name emblazoned on a giant piece of granite over crosswalks painting, over sidewalks being done, which the sidewalks are going to be done eventually, but obviously the priority has been this water fountain, the wishing well.
Excuse me.
So, Mr. President, let me just finish.
Counselor Orego, just one second. I don't want to get into a political thing here tonight.
I'm not, it's not political. This is about the city. There was never any picture, and I've seen the drawings, and I know the information that Counselor Zambudo is talking about, there was never any picture that showed a quote from the mayor. And the fact that somebody who is alive is quoting himself is just crazy, but, I mean, it's crazy. And the fact that I have to fight to defend this is crazy, but what I want to say is that what I would be willing to do, and what some other communities do, is instead of the vote for, is required for expenditure, that the vote be required for acceptance of any grant. So therefore, if we get a grant that comes in with a certain amount of money, we can accept it. The money can go out, it does not impugn or change Director of Finance Anzoni's job, but we will know, if we are accepting the grant on behalf of the city, we will know that there is grant money coming into the city and where it's being spent and how it's being spent. Thank you.
Point of information.
State your point, Counselor.
Most grants that come before us, before they're even, yes, we do.
Counselors.
The department heads usually come up and look for approval, and a lot of grants require a vote of the City Council before you can submit the grant. I've been up here a lot of years.
It should be every, it should be every counselor. That's the point.
Bottom line is, I'm against this motion.
Can't pick and choose what grants you're going to.
Roll call on the motion.
As amended, Mr. President.
Roll call to deny the public hearing.
This should go to a public hearing.
I agree.
I got a motion to deny it, to deny it from going to a public hearing.
All right. Then let's vote on it, then. I can't vote to deny this unless it's going to a public hearing. I think it should go to a public hearing.
Call the roll, Mr. President.
We're missing four city counselors here this evening, and it may very well be that the will of the city council is to deny this motion, but let's go through the proper procedures. Let's do it.
There's a point. We don't always send things to public hearings. There's many public hearings been voted down before they went to public hearings.
No, I know that. I know that.
So don't say, but, Mr. President, with all due respect.
This seems to be a very sensitive issue.
With all due respect, don't say that, let's stick to regular procedures, because it is a procedure not to send something to a public hearing if somebody doesn't feel it's worthy of a public hearing. I don't feel this is worthy of a public hearing. That's my opinion.
I'm a voter activist.
So what?
I'm a voter activist.
All right. You want to, you get a motion to vote on this, not to go to a public hearing, is that correct?
Motion to send it to a public hearing.
All right. Motion to send it to a public hearing. Is that your motion?
Roll call.
Second. Roll call. Motion to send this to a public hearing when there are 11 city counselors being able to be present.
On the motion to send the ordinance amendment as amended by Counselor Orego to a public hearing. Counselor Orego.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No. Counselor Patch?
No.
No. Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No. And Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The motion fails. Motion fails. You need six. There's no further business.
This meeting is adjourned. Hearing no further business. Our next meeting will be May 4 at 6:00 p.m.